Welcome everyone to this study session of Erie City Council. I wanted to call it planes, trains, and automobiles, but we didn't get the public works people here to talk about parking and plowing and looking ahead to the next season. So, I did figure this was a, there were some common themes here that we're going to hear about. I want to have, how about everybody introduce themselves and we'll have our, then we'll start with Derek and you guys can introduce yourselves too. I'm Liz Allen from Erie City Council.
Ed Brusinski, City Council.
No, Mr. Paul. Michael Keys.
Chuck Nelson.
Mo Trup.
Jeremy Peterson.
Dave Robinson.
Michael Furman.
Derek Martin.
Thank you for, Derek had talked to, actually, my former colleague Kathy Schoff is in the audience tonight, and Derek had introduced himself to us a few years ago to explain to us about how the airport authority works, how the business operation that he is tasked with running, and he had asked if he could present to city council. It seemed like it was an opportune time as we are hopefully emerging from the pandemic to look at a couple of transportation issues, and why does that matter to city council and the people that we represent? All different forms of transportation, but Derek's going to talk to us about the airport authority. I thought it'd be good to have Jeremy, the CEO of EMTA, and Dave Robinson talk to us. You're going to talk a little bit about the strategic plan for EMTA. I think that's especially critical for people to hear about as we're all thinking about higher gas prices. And I asked Michael Furman, kind of a last minute invite, to come here and talk to us about train transportation. He's the executive director of all aboard Erie and also the Lake Shore Rail Alliance, which is advocating for better passenger service through Erie, the Lakeshore Limited, and beyond. We had just had a presentation from PennDOT at our last city council caucus session about some potential investments in the train station. So, Michael will be able to let us know what's happening. We do not yet have full service here from Amtrak going through Erie, and we know that that's also an option for people as they're considering how to get in and out of Erie, not around Erie yet. So, Derek, would you like to start? And I figured 15, 20 minutes per agency and organization, then we have some time for questions. And if you have ideas on ways that city council can support or advocate for, you know, a range of transportation options, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz and Council. Thanks for having me here today this evening. Frankie, there we go. So, the economics of airports, we're going to go over that this evening and how the airport functions and how we work. To let people know, the airport authority was started in 1951 when the city, the municipality of Erie created the Erie Airport Authority. In the 2000s, the airport authority was joined by the county, and that's when it became the Erie Regional Airport Authority. So, that's how, there's five members representing the city of Erie, and there's four representing the city council that serve on our board. Next, please. So, the airport is a federal facility such likes, just like the post office in town, the social security administrations. We take federal grants, and when we take federal grants, it requires us to follow a variety of legislations that are out there. So, we agree with the 36 federal, I guess, legislation, six executive orders, 23 federal regulations as well, and anytime they change, the most one most people are familiar with is the Davis Bacon Act, which is basically a prevailing wage that we have to do when we let union contracts. Next slide, please. So, the economic impact of the Erie Airport is pretty dramatic. The state, approximately every 10 years, does an economic impact on the airport, and basically in 2010, 127 passengers boarded the Erie Airport and departed out of town. Forty-two percent of those people came from a different city, so that created about 53,000 visitors to the Erie community. That 53,000, those visitors back in 2010 spent about $860 per visit, whether that was in hotels, restaurants, car rentals, different attractions as they came here for leisure or business in the community. Next slide, please. There's a multiplier effect when it comes to economic activity. If you measure the, for every 19.3 persons of employment in the Commonwealth with $1 million of commercial activity output, that equates to 880 jobs is created at the airport. And based on an average salary of 21,600, 19 million annual payroll is generated because of the airport. Next slide, please. This is the interim report for 2019. It talks about statewide and the impact that airports have on economic of a community. And as you can see, from 2011 jobs to 2019, those jobs have increased, payroll has increased, as well as the total output has increased for the airport as we grow aviation throughout the Commonwealth. Next slide, please. So, we're funded by user fees. So, the airport takes no local taxpayer dollars. We are self-sufficient. So, we charge rates and charges to the airlines, the car rental companies, the parking, the restaurant, they all pay fees and services to utilize the airport. This is funded typically by the aviation ticket tax. That's a tax that goes on your airline ticket if you fly in and out of any airport throughout the United States. You get part of that tax for capital projects. Once your community boards 10,000 passengers annually a year, and if you do that, you get a minimum of a million dollars to use for capital improvements, and that is done through the airport improvement program. So, the airport Erie size, we get 90% of our funds for capital projects through the federal government, 5% is funded from the state, and the other 5% is funded from local profits that the airport has at the airport. Next slide, please. It's all based on a calculation, and the federal government did this under National Policy Order 5100.38D. Basically, if the federal government appropriates $3.2 trillion and more into that program for the first 15, 50,000 passengers, you multiply that times 5.6, and the next 50,000, 10.4, and that's what your, whatever those numbers come to, which you get for capital projects. So, the Erie Airport in 2016 had 87,640. So, you multiply those numbers, and we got a total of $1.1 million from the federal government for capital projects at the airport for fiscal year 2016. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown of their revenue data for Erie based on sources of income for 2018. So, north coast areas are what's called a fixed base operator. They fly planes in, they fuel them, they do maintenance on them and things of that nature. 5% of our revenue comes from them. We have other airport revenue, and that's usually a fuel flowage fee. It might be some customs and border protection, and that's 326,000 or 10%. The administration pieces, we sell fuel to different people on the airfield, and that's just our recovery of those funds. The buildings are building leases either on the airport or off the airport that we had. The land site basically has to do with the airport, vendors, car rentals, restaurant, and others as they use their facility. And in public safety, we get information or dollars back for police service at the airport through the Transportation Security Administration. Next slide, please. So, the airport does airport improvements, and it's basically done off our master plan. 2019, we had various construction projects. Well, I'll go through some of those we had there. So, one of the things we did was new flooring the terminal building. We had a 1950 building, and it looked like 1950, so we replaced all the flooring, we replaced all the seating. And because the building was built in 1950, the restaurant was on the wrong side of the terminal building. So, what that meant is if you went through security, you couldn't get a cup of coffee because there was nothing back there. And so, it seems like something, as you're laughing, something minor, but people said, you know, it's nice if I leave at 5:00, 6:00 in the morning, it'd be nice to get a cup of coffee. So, we redid that part of the terminal building, and now you can get a full restaurant, full bar, and a cup of coffee behind security and wait and relax for your flight, and people seem to appreciate that. Next slide, please. Here are some of the projects we've done over the last few years. So, in 2020, we constructed a car rental canopy where the only airport in the country this size that has one. We spent $1.28 million, and it allows for when passengers pick up their car arriving at Erie, it's covered by a canopy, protects them somewhat from the snow because snow goes sideways, but it protects them for the rain. And it's been a good component upgrade. We did parking lot resurfacing as well as we put gate controls in throughout the facility. Next slide, please. This is a snow removal equipment building. We did it over a two-year time period, approximately $3 million. 12,500 square feet, it has nine bays. So, people say, well, why do you need a building for your equipment? The snow removal equipment is 650, sometimes $800,000 per piece of equipment. So, we want to maintain the useful life for our equipment, and one of the best ways to do that is to have that stuff indoors, and this facility does that. This was funded by the FAA. Originally, it was going to be 95, five and five, as I mentioned before, but because of CARES, the feds paid 95 from that, and then they actually paid 100% because they let us use additional funding through the CARES Act to fund the rest of this building. Next slide, please. This terminal apron expansion was just completed December of '21. We started, this was a challenging project because we're coming out of the pandemic and people weren't working. So, the wonderful city of Mill Creek has a ordinance for stormwater, which increased this project by a million dollars. They required a 100-year flood, the FAA required a five-year flood, and that delta increased the project by a million dollars. So, and the other piece in this project that was difficult was the piping that we used to put underground to retain the water. The people that made them weren't working, so we had to actually wait for them to get back to work before we started the projects because we didn't want to get in the middle of the project and not be able to complete it because of supply chain issues. Next slide, please.
Oh, Liz Alstom.
This is a passenger boarding bridge that was just completed. It's on Gate 3. Started 2122. It's a $2 million bridge. We had to upgrade the 1950 terminal building electricity because it couldn't hold the additional loads as well as we're preparing for additional modifications down the road. So, we had to do an electrical upgrade to the terminal building, the passenger jet bridge. What you'll see on this jet bridge that differ from the other ones, it's clear. So, as the passengers are boarding or unboarding the plane, they can look out and see the community as they're walking into the terminal building or onto the aircraft. Next slide, please. So, misconceptions that, and this might have some of your questions a little later. A lot of people in the community think the airport is subsidized by taxpayer dollars. As I said, we're unsubsidized. We don't take taxpayer dollars, we're self-sufficient. The other one is the $80 million runaway project. Taxpayers think they paid for it. The FAA is funded by the aviation ticket tax, which is the AIP program. So, if you don't use the air transportation system in the country, you don't contribute to the air transportation authority. So, an easy way to explain that is if you go from here to Albany, New York, you can take the toll road and pay a toll, and you pay the user fee. If you want to go to the back roads, you can still get the Albany, but it doesn't cost you any. Next slide, please. The importance of the airport to the region, a lot of people sometimes don't understand that. So, Erie Insurance is a Fortune 500 company operating in 12 states. However, they're trying to attract people from out the country to compete with Progressive, State Farm, Allstate, and all these other organizations, and people want the ability to get in and out in a viable manner, and that's usually public transportation. Our hospital networks, again, if you're trying to attract doctors, they want to be able to fly out from the local community to their final destination. When I lived in Oregon, there was two doctors. They would come to an airport on Thursday or Friday, and I'd say, where are you off to this time? Well, we're going to Paris for the weekend. They were able to do that because we had an airport in that community. The universities, Edinburgh, Mercyhurst, Penn State, I left one off, Gannon, hopefully they don't hold it against me, but I'll talk about Gannon. So, Gannon, along with the other universities, attracts international students. International students are important because those students pay full fare, full rates, there's no discounts, and they pay cash. So, this spring, Gannon University has 350 international students that flying in and out of Erie Airport for their education over their four-year term. One anecdote that happened when the pandemic hit, everybody threw their, these kids off campus. There was a kid that was at the airport, he had five pieces of luggage, his golf clubs, and so I laughed, I said, are you going away for the weekend? He goes, play golf? He goes, no, I'm going home. This is the end of my college career. So, he's going back to Helsinki-Fentland. He's been, was in Erie for four years getting education. Maybe he was held from Helsinki. LeCom is one of the most sought-after medical schools in the country, partly for their price, partly for the cost of living here in Erie, Pennsylvania, as well as the education that is provided. Those students fly into Erie on a regular basis to get interviewed. You can always tell, they get off the plane, they got a suit on, they're going to get their interview at LeCom to see if they get in, they get back, and they get on the plane and go away. A lot of corporations other than Erie Insurance count on the airport as well to conduct their business, and it helps with the convention center as the visitor bureau tries to attract new business into the community. They rely on cars as well as air transportation to get people to and from the region. Erie is not immune to the challenges of the world. We've lived through the global pandemic. We had double-digit growth in '18, double-digit growth in '19. We started the first quarter of 2020 with double-digit growth, and then somebody took like a hacksaw and knocked us down to our knees. So, the pandemic has had effect on the airport in July of 2020, or January of 2020, the Delta Airlines discontinued service to Erie. They operated three flights a day in and out of Erie. They operated really a business schedule. You could fly from the west coast, Seattle, LA, San Francisco, get to Detroit, be in Erie by 10:30 in the morning after a red eye, work all day, get on a plane, go back to Detroit, and go wherever you wanted, and you could do that in a day. We don't have the capability because that service isn't available. There has been a cruise shortage. The cruise shortage has affected our Dulles route. We started non-stop service during the pandemic in December of 2020, and it went nonstop between Erie and Washington-Dulles and obviously connect up and down the east coast. Because of cruise shortages, 14 communities, including Erie, lost that route, and we're waiting for them to get their crews back up in line and go from there. And the airplane retirements, Delta Airlines actually has retired the aircraft that they flew in and out of Erie, and they do not plan to fly that anymore. So, we're trying to get a replacement carrier for that service here at Erie. Next slide. And I guess that was it?
Okay.
So, I guess the others are going to go, we save questions for the end, or however you like to do it.
What are some, you have a strategic plan, also a short-term and a long-term strategic plan, and how soon might you know if you're able to attract another carrier? I think when you talked to Kathy and me, you also talked about, a lot of times, people like to say, well, why aren't we doing, I think what it might be Youngstown is doing, or some of the other airports that we're compared to are subsidized, I believe that you told us. So, what are some of the challenges you have, and how are you addressing that in terms of being unsubsidized?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, what Liz is referring to, airports survive one or two ways. They're taxpayer-supported or they're self-funded. So, for example, the Trobe Airport basically taxed their citizens $2.5 million to help subsidize the airport. That subsidized helps drive their costs down, which has allowed them to track one airline, that's the only airline that have a spirit and have been there for years. Youngstown doesn't have any air service right now. So, what we've done is we've tried to leverage federal dollars through the small community air service grant. So, we did that with Dulles. We were successful in getting the grant. The grant came in place. Congressman Kelly was helpful in making that happen, and that service started. Most recently, we've applied for another small community air service grant, which was due on March 15th. We should hopefully find out in August to give us some funds that we can try to attract a low-cost carrier to get non-stop service to Orlando and Tampa, Florida. So, we're trying to get some of the low-cost carrier service into the community, which will help drive the cost of people traveling in and out of Erie, as well as drive our operational costs down as we continue to try to get the air carriers to add more frequency to the community. So, for example, in 2019, we had United and American Delta. American Airlines in 2021 was off their mark for 2019 numbers by 293 passengers. So, they were operating at 99.3% of their market share two years into the pandemic in 2020, at the end of 2021. United Airlines was operating at 110% capacity, so they were actually flying more people in and out of Erie after two years of the pandemic. So, what that says is that we can fill the flights, we just need more seats and capacity. So, right now, American Airlines is operating at a 98, 99% load factor in and out of Erie. What that means is they should add another flight. At 80%, you should be adding another frequency, but there's no pilots and crews. And it's more evident if you look at our flight schedule. There's a real early morning departure out of Erie. One of my board members is flying out tomorrow morning. He goes, it's 5:45, it's early. He likes to sleep in. But our arrival for Americans driving around 12:15, 12:30 at night, and you usually don't leave a hub that late to come to your final destination. So, it shows you that they're really trying to stretch out the use of the planes and the crews as best they can to serve as many communities as they can. So, if things work out, as we hope, we'll get the Dulles service back with two frequencies a day. American will add another frequency to Charlotte, as well as United would maintain their service to Chicago and bring the bigger aircraft from a 50-passenger plane to a 70-passenger plane back, as well as we're trying to work on SkyWest to do the Delta route to Detroit.
Do you think that, you know, for a few years, or maybe for a long time, people would think, eh, I don't want to fly out of Erie, I'm going to, I'd rather drive to Cleveland or Pittsburgh or Buffalo. Have you, despite the pandemic and the pilot shortage, has it been successful to persuade people that it's actually more convenient to fly out of Erie, do you think? Or do you still need to persuade some people about that?
I still think we need to continue that messaging, but I think what really, what really people don't understand is that when we were flying people out here in 2018 and 2019, 75, 80, 90% of our travelers were business travelers. During the pandemic, this was all leisure. We had families flying out of Erie to their destination. So, our numbers have increased since the pandemic, and it's driven by leisure traveler. So, I think our message that, you know, what people sometimes don't understand, and I talked to the CEO of Erie Insurance, and I convinced him, I said, if you're driving to Pittsburgh, Buffalo, and Cleveland, people say, well, I don't want to connect. Well, you just did. You just drove it. That's the only difference. You drove two and a half, three hours to do that, and then when you come back, you drive it again. So, imagine arriving back to Cleveland at 1:30 or 11:30 at night. By the time you get to your car or whatever you're doing, it's after midnight and two hours on the roads. Night icy, you're not in your bed till 2:00, 2:30 in the morning. So, one of our ads has been, you can be from baggage clean to pajamas in five minutes, fly Erie International Airport.
So, while I have both of you here, Mr. Peterson also, so I know like one hotel chain has a shuttle, but from a perspective of either public transportation or the airport, if these are our main carry, people who are coming in, the students, and then the tourists, are you looking at, or have you looked at shuttle services to those main places, to the universities, and to the main hotels? Because like you said, people are coming in at 11:30 at night, and a lot of times it's, you know, the airport's closing, it's inclement weather, how are we going to ensure these people, you know, move from the airport to their destination?
Right. So, Derek and myself, we, good question, Michael. Derek and myself, we do have a few route buses that do service the airport. And once again, we have an airline server. So, if somebody needs to get to the east side of Erie, they could take those two buses, the 31, 32, take it to Erie, interline downtown, get over to the east side. So, but there are, right now, no So, but there are, right now, no direct shuttles from the, the airport to, let's say, Gannon University, but there's a way to do that.
And that, and to get people to and from, we worked with the, I think the mayor's office as well as the convention and visitors bureau. The Bayfront Hotels was one of those folks that didn't have to shuttle and we convinced them it was in their best interest. So now they provide shuttles down to the shared in the courtyard, as well as there is a company called Nelson. Is it Nelson?
Yeah, Nelson Flagship Trolley and Hanson's Air Service.
Hanson, so Hanson's started advertising the airport. We put that information on our website. So people pre-arrange their rides before they get here. And that's one of the things that's happened during the pandemic. People used to take for granted, you go somewhere and you don't have to have a reservation for rent a car and when you get there, they're sold out. So people are, I think, more aware of the challenges, not just in Erie, but other places. I flew to a conference in Orlando, Florida and I got to rent a car, but I met some people that flew in from LA and they flew into the airport and they waited two, an hour and fifteen minutes for an Uber and then they were charged surge pricing to go twelve miles, sixty-five bucks to their hotel. So I think the, the traveling public is getting more aware of some of those challenges and so they're, they're booking those things ahead. To get to the local universities, usually that is a peak sort of thing and I think the universities have started running truck, shuttles for their students to the airport as they're leaving for spring break and the school season, Christmas and those sort of timeframes.
When you did the, the like new, new additions and stuff like that, how did you come up with the ideas for that? Is that community-based or like was that just people, how did you come up with the?
Well, for example, the, the restaurant, people would say, "Well, I can't get a cup of coffee." And so you had to understand what the challenges were and then people believed that things, you know, people will come into the airport now and say, "Well, I can't get a cup of coffee," but they're there to pick up people or something like that. The restaurant at the airport is really meant for the traveling public. So how could we best serve the traveling public? So we looked at how we could do that cost-effectively and meet the needs of the traveling public. The, the food that we have there, this new vendor, we had to put on RFP, they operate, I think, in twenty-seven airports throughout the country. So they're understanding how to work in a small airport environment, how to do that. When they first started off, I think they, they hired twelve additional people. The manager was local. So all those things that we did and the revenue that it generated for the airport, we were basically subsidizing for a local lady to run the airport. She said she could only afford to give us a hundred dollars a month. The new vendor came in and promised us thirty-four hundred dollars a month as a minimum. So having somebody that does this professionally at other locations helped benefit the community as well as the airport.
Any other airport questions? How about if we move on to EMTA? Okay, Jeremy and Dave?
All right, thank you. You know, very similar to Mr. Martin and the Airport Authority, we ourselves at EMTA, if you've been across East Fourteenth Street between French Moving East of Parade, our seventy-two million dollar capital project has been completed as well. We are actually fluidly sending out invitations for, to save the date for ribbon cutting for June fourteenth. So cats will be, will be invited to that. Looks like it would be a nice, very big community event, given the fact that we're a community asset, at least that's what we believe that we are. We want to bring the, the community together and just have a good time. The, the redevelopment of East Fourteenth, sort of mid-city downtown, has been a collaboration of not only just EMTA, but the Griffiths, Michelle and Rick Griffith, Matthew Good from the Hands Program, and then also just west of us too, with, you know, Jim Berlin, Chris Sariani from Brewery, Andy Sissini from Griswold Park and Pete Zaffris as well in that area. So there's a lot of exciting things happening in the midtown, downtown, within the city of Erie. So we would invite anybody from council to come. You don't have to wait till the ribbon cutting, but feel free to come down, I'll be avail, I can make myself available at any time to give a tour of our facility. With the new makeup of the city council, I mean, this is, this is a great opportunity, Liz, for us to get together and sort of talk about what we have going on and what the future of, not only the airport, the rail, but, but what, what's the future of transit? Before I took over, I'll be very honest with you, I thought, you know, the, the transit system was a waste of taxpayer money at that point. We, we, we ran the same routes constantly for the last forty years. We never paid attention to demographic or business shifts. We didn't pay attention to, you know, the new American population coming in, where are they living? You know, these are the folks that depend on transportation. Here in Erie, it's very unique. We have to fight and claw for our, our ridership, right? We're not like a Pittsburgh where we have white and blue collar folks taking the buses to, to work. Here, parking is very accessible. That's one of our biggest blockades and deterrents for people jumping on a bus. So we have to really reach out and constantly be talking with the student governments at, at the local universities at that level, talking with, just, just getting ourselves out there, period. So we have a new marketing strategy that's going to be started and initiated here very soon, as well some different shifts as far as administration internally and hopefully a, a new transit development plan too. We want to take a really hard look at the city of Erie and the county of Erie and take a look where it makes sense for buses and the frequency to get, you know, how we run. I mean, just like, you know, air, airplanes. I mean, you gotta have the frequency. The problem that we have right now is, once again, the global pandemic has, you know, put a, cast a spell on us as far as recruitment and, and applicants and, and workers. So, you know, we hear a lot about Sunday service and when are you gonna bring it back? Listen, we, we hear everybody, we would love to bring it back. The problem is right now, I just have to have the workforce to do that. Once we have the workforce to do that, I mean, that's something that we would definitely take into account. Dave Robinson, I brought him here not only to talk about our strategic plan, but also as a voice as our, our former chairman of the board. You know, Dave was very in tune with, with what our administration currently wanted to do. We knew that our strategic plan needed to, we, we needed to renew that, take a look at it. So there's a lot of exciting things happening at EMTA and I sort of want to hand it off to Dave so we could talk a little bit more about our strategic plan and how we're gonna move EMTA forward in the future.
And I think Dave also has that advantage of having, in his previous job, worked in a, a poor community of, of Union City, which was all, because you aren't just serving the city, you're a county-wide service, which also is a challenge because, you know, in terms of frequency, in terms of, you know, who doesn't have transportation to jobs. So I didn't mean to steal your thunder, but I think that that's important for people to know that you're bringing not only your former, your experience as chairman of the board of EMTA, but also at the Union City Family Center, I think, right?
Yes, and thank you. And, and that, I'd always tried to be a voice for that part of South County that, that's challenged on so many ways and transportation being among the highest. So before I say something about the strategic plan, which we're really excited about, just to give you a little context about pandemic impact on ridership, for instance, that everybody's interested in. We had two hundred million, two hundred and, two million one hundred and sixty-five thousand and change riders in two thousand and eighteen. Two thousand and nineteen, we had two million one hundred and eighty thousand and change. Two thousand and twenty, we dropped to nine hundred and thirty-two thousand and change. That was a fifty-five percent drop in one year. In two thousand and twenty-one, the slide continued down to seven hundred and fourteen thousand, that was another twenty-two thou, twenty-two percent drop from the previous year. So all in all, we dropped seventy-seven and a half percent from the lockdown until, until then, until last year. The numbers that I just got that are for this year, up to today, show a thirty-six percent increase over the same period last year, which tells me that we are starting to, our riders are starting to come back, slow but sure, right? And as the weather starts to open up and as COVID, you know, becomes part of history hopefully, then we'll, we'll be fully back, back up with our riders. But that leaves us with a, with a problem that, you know, as Derek said about crews and Jeremy pointed to, we have a driver shortage, a terrible driver shortage right now. We lost twenty-one drivers through retirement, a few that didn't come back after they were furloughed at the beginning of the pandemic. Some died, some moved into non-driving positions, but that left us basically down those, that many drivers. We need right now at least eighteen new drivers for our fixed route service just to get, just to be able to provide the services that we were serving before the pandemic. And if you've noticed, we've been trying everything we can to recruit. So, you know, anybody that you know that wants a great job at a great place, EMTA's hiring, fixed route and lift. The, as far as the strategic plan goes, that was one of my main priorities with the board. Over the last couple of years, as we, as we really were doing so much reorganization and we had a whole new administration with Jeremy and his, and his staff. So we began last fall. We decided our, we decided as a group that we were not going to go down the normal path of, you know, going, going to the state and asking them to give us a grant and then we would use their, their, their consultants and they would come down and check off some boxes and give us a plan. What we wanted to do was something very indigenous, very organic here at Erie. At that time, Court Gould was beginning to leave the, his position at the foundation and I had a relationship with him and I began to talk with him about working with us. He agreed to come on and since then, we've had, we've taken a deep dive into all aspects of the Transit Authority and the systems that we, that we impact. We started this process with two focuses. We wanted to look at everything that we do through, through, actually through, through three lenses. We wanted to look at resilience, how do we maintain a resilient authority that can, that can deal with things like a pandemic or, or shifts in demographics or changes in ridership patterns. You know, as Jeremy said, most of the transit system is designed to get people to the mall back in nineteen eighty-two. That needs to be changed and we're, we're doing the groundwork now to change that, make it more responsive to the needs of the people who are using it today. Our second, our second quali, our second quality was, there she is.
Can you guys hear me?
Now we can, now we can.
Okay, yeah, I was trying earlier and wasn't successful. I wanted to know what was the starting rage, wage for the drivers? What do you, you know, what's the, the point of advertisement?
Yeah, fixed, fixed route drivers are right, right now, right? Hit the button, hit the button. Oh. Little, little over eighteen dollars an hour with a top rate of twenty-nine, seventy-five. So it's a four-month, it's a four-year, forty-eight month progression. It's, it's a fast progression and it's a good, once again, a, a good occupation and a good paying job.
Benefits as well, healthcare, pension.
Dental vision, yeah.
Often overtime too?
Right now, yes. A lot of overtime, but right now, looking at, it's volatile, overtime too. I mean, there's, there's very rarely are we mandating overtime to, to certain drivers. So right now, we, we are, but when we're at where we're supposed to be, usually it's, there's a driver overtime list and it's, it's all, it's completely voluntary, whether you want morning overtime or afternoon overtime or both.
What are they, like when someone comes in, is interested, what are the qualifications they need or just driver's license or whatever?
Some of the qualifications are, you know, quite frankly, a clean driving record. You have to be twenty-five years or older, okay? You have to have a clean motor vehicle record. And, and CDL, yes. If you don't, I mean, that doesn't completely disqualify you, we'll train you. We have, we have a very good training program, process and trainers there that, that will, will, they'll be more than happy to get that CDL for you.
That was my second question, was do you guys do this training? Yeah, so thanks for answering that.
That I didn't hear. Can you repeat that, Jasmine?
I was saying, thank you for clarifying that you guys are willing to train for individuals who do not have a CDL license. I think that really makes people, they're not gonna get the job if they don't have it. But now the public is, we get some more people who are willing to be trained so we can get those jobs filled.
Okay. I, I, I just wanted to interject that, I just want to thank Jasmine. We met last week, she's now our liaison and since Kathy's here, I really want to thank Kathy, who's been a terrific partner over the last few years, that communication. So Jasmine's already heard my whole shtick about the strategic plan and everything, but um, you had, Mr. Wizards, you had a question?
Yes, does your problem with drivers include the lift program?
Yes, so fixed route drivers are looking, we could, we could fill about eighteen. On the, on the lift side, we're looking to fill about fifteen vacancies in the driver, within the driver's ranks. Once again, no, no CDLs required.
Right.
The only thing is, people don't really understand and realize how, how, you know, intense driving a lift bus is. I mean, you're pushing, you're pulling, you're bending, you're kneeling, that sort of thing. So a lot of people think it's just getting behind the wheel and driving circles all day long. No, there's a lot to it, especially in, in inclement weather too. People with mobility devices, so on and so forth, and folks that are disabled, need assistance in a, in a, in a helping hand. So there's a lot that goes into that job.
Also with the lift positions, a lot of those are part-time and a lot of those are second-career folks who are, who, who want, want to give back, want to have a, have a meaningful job, but, you know, don't want to work full-time.
Yeah, I use Lyft quite often and I'm very pleased, especially with the ladies who schedule the program there, they're dynamic. One thing about the Lyft, you can see parts of Erie that you've never been to before. And I, I get lost just riding there, I say, "Where am I at?" And it's usually two blocks away, but I just didn't, usually didn't travel that way. But your drivers are, all of them are very professional, very kind and I observe them when they're helping someone in a wheelchair or walker. They treat them a hundred percent.
Yeah, that's, I'm glad to hear that, Mr. Wizards. It's a public service that we provide and sometimes in public service, it's not an easy job. So, you know, we do, this administration has started employee of the month awards for, for our, our workers. Also, you know, employee dinners, holiday functions, that sort of thing too, just to show our appreciation for them, because it's not an easy job, you know? And for a long time, under different administrations and regimes, that was, they were taken, you know, for granted. So, you know, this administration, this board realizes the importance of their, their position and their place in this community. So thank you.
I want to get back to Dave, but before that, I figured maybe we should just swing back to Derek for a minute because we know that becoming a pilot isn't the same as, you know, going down and, and applying for training to be a bus driver, but I just wondered if you could just real quick, that's, I know that that's a nationwide problem with the pilot shortage. Is there any end in sight or are there any solutions to that that are, I think, probably a little bit more challenging than, I mean, not that you aren't having a challenge, but hopefully now that you're at the study session, you'll get a bunch of applications for the, the drivers, but I didn't mean to overlook you when you were talking about that as a issue.
Oh, no. So to, we have a flight school out at the airport, teaches people how to get their private, private license. United Airlines was the first airlines to start a flight academy for people that wanted to learn to fly but didn't think they had the, the money and the resources. So people in the community here can go online to United, United Airlines Flight Academy, fill out an application, they could be accepted, they'll, they'll send you out to, I think that's in Arizona, and they'll teach you how to train and then once you're done with your training and get your hours in, they'll start flying and working for United Airlines. So now there's more of a path for people and what Jeremy and his team has done is they realize is that they have to train people that don't have their CDL. The airlines are doing something similar with that. And so I think that's important for people to know, especially there's some young people here in the community that have started their flying license, they live in the six-five-oh-one area code and they've started that process. So some of the people that I've met, I've tried to make them aware that those opportunities are available to them and that they can pursue them and hopefully we'll see more and more pilots coming from this community.
It's good to hear. Okay, Dave, that, we'll go back to you.
So the other two lenses that, that really figure hard, big are, are equity. We're talking about racial and social equity, both within the institution, but also within the community. That's going to affect how we look, how we respond to the, to the dramatic increase in new Americans in the community just over the last fifteen, twenty years. Looking at ridership patterns now and how do they, however they changed from fifteen, twenty years ago so that they could be more responsive. Internally, we are putting all of our, all of our staff through the entire place through a dignity and respect training that was developed through associates of our solicitor, Jill Nagy. Nagy, who they pilot, they've run this program in three other transit agencies in Pennsylvania. It's been very successful and we hope, we had, we were on the verge of getting it, getting to doing it and then the pandemic hit. So, we're hoping that we can, we can start this summer. And then finally, and this will probably be the most transformational, is addressing climate change. You know, as a transit authority, you know, we're, we're a big user of fossil fuels. Now, over the last years, we've made a dramatic change to compressed natural gas, which at the user end is dramatically more climate friendly, but however, when it comes down, it's still just a transitional fuel because getting the, getting the CNG out of the ground, transporting it is the dirty end of the process. So, what we're doing right now is, we're working with consultants who are helping us do the groundwork that so many other communities and agencies and authorities are, are not doing, which is, we're doing a really deep dive into our own energy usage and our potential energy needs because as you know, we have serious issues with our electric grid in the city. It's one thing, and at the same time, a lot of money is being floated out there for communities to apply to get electric charging stations, for instance, but a lot of places are moving, they're putting the, they're putting the charging station ahead of the groundwork to make sure that their grid can handle it. You know, you know, you're talking about some serious, serious megawatts here and for, for us to be able to incorporate electric bus usage in the mix with our CNG over the next five to ten years so that we can get to a, to a greenhouse gas reduction that we want, it's going to take a lot of infrastructure. But before we can move on the infrastructure, we have to do the deep analysis so that we know and then begin to work with Pennalec to see what kind of upgrades are necessary, what kind of transformer upgrades are necessary in our area, as well as how can we get enough power in here? That's a, it's been, it's a very interesting project. I've been in touch with Sarah, who's the sustainability coordinator for the city, made her aware of what we're up to and, and left open the possibility that as we have a best, as we have a positive experience with this group that we're working with, that we might be able to make a referral and they could begin to have the same kind of conversation with the city.
That is like music to our ears because Chuck and Michael are working on finding out about our capital needs in terms of vehicles and it sounds like you're going to have some of the groundwork done and you've already started working on that relationship. And Mel, having come out of, you know, the, the Pennalec family is always interested in, you know, electric issues, so it sounds like, woo-hoo, we're gonna, we're gonna get somewhere now. So, Michael has taken the lead in, in pushing us when we've been like kind of routinely approving, well, we're going to buy this vehicle, we're going to buy that one, let's look at electric vehicles. So, it was worth it just to hear that tonight, thank you.
That's, yeah, that, that's one of our major, I mean, we really want to be a leader in the community, you know, because we do field an awful lot of gasoline vehicles, we want to be a leader in this transition and this is a huge transition. As you probably understand already, it's a major transformation. If we want Erie to be the kind of place that can attract the young, educated workforce that we all envision for the future, then we're going to have to have a smart city. And I mean, that's a very specific term, smart city, right? That's, that's a smart electric grid, that's smart lighting, that's smart use of, of electric across the whole spectrum of uses. You know, I've heard people say, well, why don't you put electric charging stations down on the, the dock? Yeah, where's that, where's the electricity going to come from? And my understanding is that since deregulation, the electric companies no longer cover the cost of the upgrades necessary to increase the use of, you know, so that, that has to come from the end users, but the group that I'm working with are, they also, it's, it's both an energy brokerage but also an energy consulting firm and what they're telling me is that there's a, a lot of money available for the transition, both from the government through the infrastructure efforts in the regular budget, but also from the electric companies themselves. So, be happy to work closely. So far, I'm having a good experience with them and at, at a point when you're ready, I'd love to introduce you to them and, and, and let you see for themselves, for yourselves what, what we might be able to accomplish here.
How about, are you also, like are you thinking about bike shares too?
We are, absolutely.
That's what I thought, okay.
We are. We're looking at all the, all the different modalities. Jeremy might want to say a word about.
Well, what we'd like to do is, is sort of vary, a couple of different modes of transportation and we feel that we should be the driver of that. So, we, we know that the Erie Downtown Partnership was looking to bring bike share to Erie, but they didn't have a driver for it. So, we said, well, why don't, why don't we do it? Once again, just like Derek has, you know, we, we get money, we're subsidized for the people we get on buses. We, we don't get subsidized, we can't count people on bikes. It's just, Pendott doesn't allow it for whatever reason. So, but once again, we're, we're the mode of transportation, we have bike racks on our buses to hold bikes, so we should probably transport them. I mean, it makes sense. So, what we would like to do with sort of like our, our future planning is not only electric, but once again, bike share, we have a three-tier parking ramp above eighteen thousand square, square feet of transit oriented development, which we're excited to bring in a tenant or two here in the very near future. But also, you know, when people park, you know, if they have an electric car, they can plug their car in, at, at our ramp, you know? And then also, if they want to jump on a bike, they can get a bike. It's one-stop shopping here at EMTA. That's, we want to be more of an asset than, than anything. If you take a look at the buses and the appearance of the buses that we have on the road now, they're a lot better than they were two, three years ago, a lot better. And that was a lot of work, legwork going down to Pen, or Harrisburg and talking with folks from Pendott and the Federal Transit Administration and say, hey, we have, we have some critical needs here. You know, we, we don't have the right shop equipment and, and tools necessary to do our jobs here, you know, and we're a joke. If I'm going to sit, I can't sit here and lie to, you know, a body of council members and tell them, we've given us a lot of money, you know, to operate each year, you know, without, without doing our due diligence and doing something with our end with, with those dollars. So, that's sort of what we're looking at moving forward is not to really button up our appearance, but be more of an asset to not just the city but the county as a whole.
I, I just want to add that since we became, since the new board was constituted, we became involved, Jeremy took over with his team, the changes and the, and the energy are incredible. Just, just since that point, which was what, three and a half years ago, Jeremy and his staff have brought in sixteen million dollars worth of grants be, above and beyond our subsidies for our operational costs. These are additional grants that you have to go, these are discretionary grants to go after, to replace buses, to upgrade our buses to CNG, to get cleaner, nicer buses, a new radio system, new fare boxes, the whole new communication setup and relationship with, 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 with the county, right? With the, on, on the emergency, yeah.
Well, we, we would have our towers, we'd have our own tower that we would spend, you know, we would, we would pay Crown Castle forty-seven hundred dollars a month for it. You know, they said, wait, we're part of the emergency, you know, response, you know, why don't we talk to nine-one, the nine-one-one center and get on their towers too? And it was just, it's, it's as simple as just getting out of your office and talking with these folks. Right now, we have, we're on five different towers now, there's no dead spots on any of our buses, so it creates a more safer atmosphere, especially for the driver. If there's, you know, somebody passes out on a bus or a Lyft bus, they, they're not in dead zone anymore. You get ahold of somebody on the radio. So, it's those types of, you know, networking and, and getting together with the people and networking within the community to make this happen and save taxpayer dollars.
One, one last piece that, that I really, really want you all to note and that's the dramatic change in our safety and training protocols over these last three, three and a half years. In the, in the year prior to the, to the, to the changeover of the board and Jeremy coming on, we were rated by safety, that's our insurance pool that, that we self-insure through, minus forty-two percent. We were a red, bad risk, we were in the, we were on the verge of being kicked out of the pool. Last year, we were rated at ninety-six percent in the top five percent of all transit authorities in the country and this is as a direct result of the staff hires and protocols that were put in place at, in the administration with a safety director and a training, a crew of trainers that are constantly, constantly upgrading the training of our drivers and staff. And so, that, that remarkable turnaround has really impacted our insurance costs, which have basically gone down because of our increased safety record and I just wanted that, you know, to know.
Dave, let's segue to train travel now with Michael and then, you know, we'll still have some time for some, any other brainstorming or where do we go from here when we're done hearing about Amtrak and Lake Shore Limited and the future of train travel in Erie?
Well, thank you Liz for inviting me and, and thank you for being here to, to engage in, in public transportation. You know, the economy of all societies rests on efficient, fast, reliable transportation, whether it's aviation, whether it's public transit, automobile or train. Your economy depends on how well you move commodities and people. So, having said that, the train situation, if we had this conversation a couple of years ago, would be pretty bleak. In nineteen seventy-one, if it wasn't for the federal government, we would not have a train service in the United States. And that's quite ironic because the United States was literally built in the nineteenth century on the backs of the railroad. It through Erie, Pennsylvania, for example, you had twelve lines that went east and west, four of which were solely passengers. And that really allowed commodities to come in and out of Chicago through Erie and back to New York. So, you know, if you fast forward a hundred years to nineteen seventy-one, we literally almost lost public transportation through passenger rail. Freight, on the other hand, has continuously done very well. Moving goods along freight, which is fairly inexpensive to do, has done exceedingly well in America. But we are having this conversation in twenty-twenty-two and something historic has really happened and that is, of course, the Biden administration infrastructure package where they invested one-point-two trillion dollars in infrastructure expenses, of which sixty-six billion has gone directly to Amtrak. Now, to put that in perspective, since nineteen seventy-one to two thousand twenty-one, the amount of money that Amtrak just recently received, which is sixty-six billion, equals the entire fifty years of investment from the federal government. So, while aviation has done exceedingly well, especially during the Reagan administration that has uncoupled it and created a private competitive industry, which has lowered the prices tremendously, Amtrak has a quasi kind of private-public relationship. And what that means is, is that they are a public service like public transit, the bus system, et cetera, but they were forced to make a profit. So, it was sort of set up to fail. So, they have kind of created a bunker mentality over the last fifty years. But this new investment will infuse Amtrak to think about what public transportation and passenger rail is going to look like for the next fifty years. So, and you're not going to get a history lesson for that and if you're interested, I'd be glad to do that, but what I thought I'd do in, in the remaining time that we do have, is I'll talk about three specific things. All aboard Erie, Lake Shore Rail Alliance, which Liz has just mentioned, as well as the Erie County Passenger Rail Commission. You may have seen that in the paper over the last four or five months ago. So, let's start with All Aboard Erie. It's a educational advocacy organization that's a nonprofit and started about ten years ago and their goal, although they support generally public transportation, their advocacy is passenger rail. How do we inform constituent base, how do we work with our legislators to increase passenger rail service in Erie County? So, over the past twelve years, there's really not a lot of success stories I can tell you. We did raise a lot of money at one point and we did a conceptual plan of what it would look like to have a high-speed rail from Pittsburgh to Erie, Pennsylvania. This has been in the news, literally as I talked to you, since the nineteen forties. As you go back through the Erie times, you'll see high-speed rail is always trying to have that relationship. Japan was the first country in the world that had a high-speed rail and of course, in the sixties, we talked about high-speed rail again. So, so we did this conceptual plan to take a look at what that would look like and, and if I can just pause here and segue for a second, it makes a lot of sense in some ways because Erie, which is our economy is made up a lot by eds and meds, right? The hospitals, that was articulated by, by, by Mr. Martin, the education systems here. Pittsburgh, as you know, bought our hospitals, right? UPMC owns Hammett and Allegheny Health Network owns Vincent. So, Pittsburgh's interest in Erie has grown more than just coming up and swimming in our lake or parking their yachts in our, in our bay, they now have a physical investment in it. So, having a relationship with Pittsburgh and Erie via a potential high-speed rail, which I think is, is a, really a faraway dream, makes a lot of sense, but the end would not be Erie, the idea would be going through Erie onto Buffalo and Toronto. That's the idea of connecting Pittsburgh with Toronto. So, that's one thing that we did about five or six years ago. I am recently the new executive director of All, of All Aboard Erie and I took the job because I was initially approached by a collection of rail, passenger rail advocacy organizations representing six different states. So, advocacy organizations are really important because they inform legislators and the public on issues that mean a lot to the community. So, I was approached to bring together seven different advocacy organizations and passenger rail from New York through Pennsylvania into Ohio, Indiana, Michigan and Illinois. And this organization, which we now call the, the alliance, the Lake Shore Alliance, has one primary goal and that is to advocate for Amtrak to increase its frequency on what Liz had called the Lake Shore Limited Line. The Lake Shore Limited Line is the oldest railroad, one of the oldest railroads in the country. Maybe Mel, you might have been on it at some times when you came in from New Jersey into Erie, but that goes from, literally from New York City to Chicago and it goes through Erie County, which is the only county in the state of Pennsylvania that that long-distance train travels through. The objective here was that sensing that that infrastructure money is going to be in the pipeline, communities that collaborate, communities that work together to build smart plans are the ones that are going to most likely be funded by this organization. So, these advocacy organizations knew that that was an important thing. They reached out to All Aboard Erie because logistically, we are kind of in the center between Chicago and New York. I mean, not directly center, but we are and we also needed Pennsylvania to play a role. Unlike air traffic and freight traffic or a, a railtra, or a truck traffic, if you don't have states that share the same railroad, singing from the same choir book, you're not going to have success, you're going to have, you know, conflict. So, we needed to make sure that we had all the states that this line runs through on the, on the same page. So, what we've ended up doing was forming a coalition and we've been consistently meeting with legislators from the state of Indiana, from the state of Ohio, we've met with state legislators. We just had a meeting this morning with the chairman of the Pennsylvania Transportation Committee and what we're trying to do is set up a system where we can create a needs assessment. So, any organization that wants to put forth a project that needs to be funded, has to do a kind of prerequisite assessment, an environmental assessment. So, what, what this alliance has done, we've already done an, an environmental assessment from Chicago to Cleveland and we've done one from, basically from Buffalo to New York, but the gap of link in the chain is between Cleveland and Buffalo. So, our job now is to work with state legislators to see if we can come up with resources to do an assessment plan between Cleveland and Buffalo where Erie County is the, is the, is the main part. So, that's kind of what Lake Shore Rail Alliance is trying to do. Now, in the midst of all this, Erie County government passed the legislation to create the Erie County Passenger Rail Commission. They, they funded it to the tune of one million dollars and that is actually in this year's budget in the county executive's office. They actually appointed nine commissioners to, to the commission. They actually appointed nine commissioners to, to the commission. But Kathy Dahlkemper, who was the then-executive director, decided to not appoint the two commissioners that the county executive had the right to do, because she felt that the incoming executive director, Brent Davis, should have that responsibility. So right now, the Erie Commission, which is funded legally, it has the resources, and it has most of the appointments, is waiting for the county executive to actually initiate that. What that does is really important, because all the funding that we're going to be seeking needs to have government take the lead role on this, whether it's the MPO, whether it's PennDOT. And Erie County, the MPO office is only one person, so they don't have the resources to get behind a project like this. And PennDOT, of course, they are mostly centered on the eastern part of Pennsylvania when it comes to railroad. Our section has, you know, the Northwest Pennsylvania has really kind of been off, off the charts here. So the commission could play a significant role in coming up with funding and having a paid staff that actually dedicates itself to identifying what are the needs in this community, and working with the alliance to make sure that we can have additional rail service coming through this area. That's pretty much what we're, what we have been doing for the past eight months.
How about any questions? And also, I guess, is there any synergy between bus transportation, train transportation, and plane transportation? I don't know. In other cities, I know that, you know, you go to another airport, and there's probably high speed to, you know what I mean, like a, not a trolley service, but a light rail to get somewhere, but...
The value, the, I had had a chance to work in Germany for nearly three years, and they do have high-speed rail. High-speed rail goes about three hundred kilometers per hour, about two hundred miles an hour. And the value of that, of course, is going from one distance to the next pretty quickly. I'll give you an example. I was just in Italy this past October at a high-speed rail expo, and we took a high-speed rail from Milan to Bologna. It's a hundred and thirty miles. And we did it less than fifty-two, did about fifty-two minutes. That distance is the same distance from Erie to Pittsburgh. Now, think about that for a second. Now, and flying is probably cheaper in some ways to get there, but flying also requires a lot of get-up-and-go and going through security, and there's a lot of checkpoints in here. And you're often going outside the city to get to the airport. One of the values of rail is it comes into the heart of the community. You really don't have the kind of loopholes, not the loopholes, but the staging centers that you have to go through necessarily. But again, high-speed rail, I think, is, for America, pretty much down the line. I think we, we, we are seeing higher-speed rails from Amtrak. There's a, there's a rail now, the Northeast Corridor, which is going between one fifty-five and two hundred miles an hour. Problem is, we don't have the actual rails set up to accommodate that high speed. But I think if, if, if you do see that infusion of resources, I think within the five to ten years, you could see faster trains coming through this area. And that's really important, because as you mentioned, you know, EMTA has really cleaned up that block on Fourteenth and State. You know, Union Station is, first of all, it's the first art deco station in America. And there are subsequent ones that follow that, that, that trend. It's really quite unique. But as you mentioned, you know, Rick Griffith and Pete Zaffiris and all these people are actually developing that whole area, and stations that actually are thriving with a lot of visitors tends to bring up the value of that neighborhood around that area. So you have Griswold Park, which is one of the, I think, one of the nicest parks in the, in the, in the area. So if we can increase the frequency and provide service to our constituencies, then we see direct impact in that area. So if you're leaving on an, on a, on a, on a train, you want to go to Chicago, you've got to leave at two in the morning. That's the only train you've got. If you want to go to New York, you've got to leave around seven in the morning. So we, we were encouraging Amtrak to look at, well, if you provide another service, that means maybe two o'clock in the afternoon or four o'clock in the afternoon. Now you're starting to create the environment of some commerce, if you can have that kind of activity. But what I was driving at is, fast trains are really important, but this is where EMTA becomes really important, is that you have to have that intermediate interconnectivity to get those people from those places. Now, in Europe, they've been doing this for, you know, they have never stopped investing in trains. So they have systems where you have trolley systems, underground systems. They have an, an S-Bond system, which actually starts underground and goes outside ground as it goes further into the rural community. America is really far away from that. But EMTA, because of its close proximity to the, to the Union Station, is a natural relationship once there's more frequency among Amtrak. We think it's going to happen, and, but the biggest thing we also are looking at is punctuality, something that Germans value very much. If you know that your, your transportation is going to be there within those five minutes, that's really important to bank on. Whereas Amtrak, because they are controlled somewhat by freight, freight owns all the railroad, generally speaking, in America, and they have to share that railroad with, with that. Now, it's legal. I mean, there are laws that's set up in the nineteen seventies that says that if Amtrak wants to use that private rail track, they can do that. But it's, it's a, it's a real struggle. But we think that this is going to change. One new thing that's going to change is, you know, a new car costs forty-seven thousand dollars. A used car costs twenty-five thousand dollars. I have two sons. None of them were that interested in owning a car. None of them really that interested in driving. Seventy-two percent of the millennials and Generation X are interested in public transportation, primarily rail, and they don't have that experience. So, you know, if you could get on Union Station, and in fifty minutes, in a leisurely, comfortable ride, and you ended up in Pittsburgh, games change for any community like Erie. Completely changes.
I think one of the things, even though I've been trying, okay, so how does the airport fit in with all this? But one of the things that I, I hear, you're talking about the revitalization of that part of the, you know, the, the upper, outer part of downtown with Fourteenth Street, with the train station. And Derek also talked about the importance of our university communities here, two of which are in the city of Erie. So we all have a stake in wanting to make sure we have a, a thriving city, because you want to have, you know, a safe city, too, for, for university students who want to come here, whether they end up flying out, or, you know, if they're from, if they're from this country or from another country. So how about any questions on train, tram? You know, my, my dream with the previous city council was always that we would go on the bus somewhere and have a city council meeting at the end of the line. So maybe this summer, I'll be able to actually pull that off. But how about any questions about the, the train travel, or the train station itself, or anybody else see any common threads here that we should be working on as, as city council members?
Very good presentation, Mike. I haven't seen you in a long time. Would it be, do you think it would be feasible for someone to live in Erie and work in Pittsburgh? Or vice versa? Would be because of the...
Absolutely. If you can have reliable, comfortable rail transportation that can move you from Union Station to Liberty in Pittsburgh, or in the heart of Cleveland or Buffalo, and you can make those trips, you know, fifty minutes, you're not only doing work on your airplane, but you're, you're socializing. There's no stress in terms of, you know, driving and not being run off of the road, or, you know, if it's winter, you're on Interstate ninety. But what that does, and this is where public transportation, what EMTA is doing, is so important. You could have people that are living in Lawrence Park or Union, or Union, Union City, who could make it up to the train, to Union Station, and from that point, you can go to those larger cities where you want to work. But yet, you want to make sure you live in the community that you want to live. That's certainly something that I experienced when I was in, in Europe. So is it possible? Yes. Will the investment spark the commitment for further investment for rail? I think it will for one reason, and I think you were talking about this, Dave, and that's the environment. You know, the transportation sector is the leading cause of greenhouse gas emissions in America, something like forty-two, forty-three percent. And of that, most of that is from cars and, and trucks, because it's diesel. A lot of it's diesel. Rail transportation, although it's, it's somewhat, in America, it is somewhat using diesel. It's a conversion of diesel-electric. But Wabtec, who took over for GE, has actually been working with GM to create a hydroenergy engine, which reduces or eliminates the use of fossil fuels. So to answer your question, I think once the spark happens, and once people start to experience the dignity of, of passenger trains and the, the accommodations that they can provide, and the service, especially in that two-hundred-mile ride is zone, right? I mean, if you're going to take, if you need to go to LA and you're in Chicago, you're going to fly. You're not going to take the train. But if you're going to be able to go from Erie to Pittsburgh, Cleveland, and Buffalo within, you know, an hour, now the game's changed, especially because you're coming from downtown to downtown. So it's possible, but it's a struggle. One of the things, the struggle is, and not, not to be partisan here, is that, you know, Republicans like the idea, but they also want to make sure that it's viable, that it pays, you know, that it, that actually you have some, some for-profit, you know, competition in it. So that's really going to be the, the long, tall test. Can it, can it, like the airline, can it be competitive enough so that it can be, you know, dynamic and accessible?
Yeah, so, yeah, I was stationed in, in Europe, well, some thirty years ago, and I know about, you know, how accessible the trains were and how you could get to just about everywhere, including small municipalities along the line. And I've been on the Amtrak once, and it broke down. I can just say that that's the honest truth. We got stuck halfway between here and Boston in the middle of winter.
Well, their, their rolling stock is actually still from the seventies and eighties. So what this fusion of resources means, that the technology that has been developing in Europe, and in particular in Asia, whereas China, they've got trains that go three hundred and forty-three miles per hour.
So that was my question. Are, you know, you said that there's a lot of money coming down the pipe for infrastructure. So do you think we're going to see the investment in the actual railways? Because I know there's, there's certain companies that are vested in, you know, the switches and other things that help the trains go faster in maintaining, you know, the stability on the road, so...
So twenty-four billion goes directly to Amtrak to fix the, the backlog of, of the trains breaking down. Twenty-four billion. That, that's going to, and the other thirty billion is going to the FRA, which is underneath the DOT, and that'll start to work its way primarily in the Northeast Corridor, because that's where the density is, that you have the Acela that's coming up from Washington to New York. So they're going to play to the strengths. But a lot of that resource starts to go out into, into communities like the Chicago and, Chicago and, and, and New York City line. I would like to say that there is two things happening that are, that are interesting. One is a for-profit high-speed rail organization called Brightline, and they run out of Florida. And it's, it's highly successful to the point where they actually have been hired now to work with California to do from San, from LA into Las Vegas. It would be a high-speed rail, right? And to get to your question about transportation, they actually have an app system where you can actually go to your app, your, your iPad, call up when you want to leave. You can actually have them assign you a car that will pick you up and take you to the train station and book your, your luggage to the next, to your destination, and there'll be another car that'll pick you up at the end. So, you know, these type of for-profit organizations are essential to, to allow more competition to happen, happen within passenger rail. Now, California is the very first state that's actually a publicly funded high-speed rail that's going to go from San Diego through LA all the way up to San Francisco. And if they can pull that off, it's, it's, it would be shy of a miracle, but they're working towards it.
So we want to try and wrap up in a minute. I, there's one thing I, I wanted to mention that just actually had come to my attention, Michael, when I, the second time I went to the Intermodal, I walked through the Intermodal. This doesn't have anything to do, I don't think, with anybody here, but the Greyhound station has signs all over that, and this kind of gets to a larger issue that, you know, Chuck has been deeply involved in and working on with people who are experiencing homelessness. So the Intermodal has signs up that the Greyhound station closes at one-thirty, and the building closes, you have to be out of there, I think, at four-fifteen. So I asked the director of the Greyhound station, who I, I sort of wish I had invited him here, too. I just did like a last-minute intro to him yesterday. The last Greyhound to leave is nine fifteen PM for Buffalo, but that building is closed. So think about the people who, who takes Greyhound. It's usually the people with the lowest amount of resources, and there is no shelter for them. He said that this happened because of COVID. It's up to Greyhound to change it, but if there's some way to kind of advocate for that, as we're looking at various ways that people who, you know, have been impacted by COVID, that's, that's one way. I was there yesterday while two people were buying a bus ticket, and they, you know, they, they weren't going to, they had to get there and buy that bus ticket before it closed.
And come back.
Anyhow, I just wanted to let people be aware of the, the Greyhound situation that I observed, so...
Well, I could answer that. We, we all have that.
Okay.
We could fix that. You don't have to search far for it.
Okay, okay. It might be...
We can address that.
Thank you, Jeremy. I really appreciate that. Okay, any other comments or smart city ideas, or anything else that we missed? If we take, if we take the bus, if I get city council on that bus, we could take that airport route and stop off and tour the airport, too, maybe?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you for taking time on a busy, I'm sure, from your busy schedules on a Thursday evening, and thank you to city council for coming in. If you think that this worked, you know, I think getting some topical study sessions are, are really helpful. I want to thank Jasmine for tuning in on Zoom and for getting good thumbs up from, as being the liaison to EMTA. So thank you for doing that. So, and thank you, Frank.
You look way too comfortable over there, Jasmine.
Thank you, Frank, for helping us. Everything went smoothly.